Six oh four, January, no. June, the sixth.
July.
July the sixth, that is not correct on that.
Oh, it says June first on our agenda.
It does, that's what threw me.
Uh, yep, it sure does.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's alright, it's alright. This is July sixth at six oh five PM. Calling to order the Beaver Creek Township zoning commission meeting. Okay, before we start, we are coming together this evening to look at case eight thirty-four. There had been case eight thirty-five on the agenda that we originally received. It has been taken off. So, information went out to all of us. Everybody's had an opportunity to revisit and look at eight thirty-four, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the notification, did it go out?
Yes.
Okay.
Because this meeting wasn't officially continued during the meeting, we did send another notice out.
Perfect. Counsel, I'd like to make certain that I understand a couple of things. First and foremost, before we approve the agenda. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Geist, or, yeah, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Geist.
Here.
Ms. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton.
I'm here.
Thank you.
We really try. I really try, but sometimes it's not good. Okay, so what I wanted to ask is to make certain that I understand two things. First and foremost is that on the agenda, before we approve it, that we are having this down as a continuation, but it's done as new business as opposed to old business. Could you help me understand that?
I don't know. It's not listed as either new or old business.
Okay, so making certain.
It's just the same case, yes.
A continuation, so it's a continuation and we are meeting again for the record, what didn't we do correctly or what needs to be corrected this meeting to make certain that we're following the rules?
Sure. The motion that was made was a motion to recommend the plan, the land use plan.
Uh huh.
That motion did not pass. Therefore, there was not anything to take to the Board of Trustees because it was not a motion to, to not recommend.
Right.
It was just, it was a motion to recommend that did not pass. And so.
So the question, the motion was done in the affirmative, denied, or the overall, rejected by the group or voted no against with the group. The majority was a no, but because we didn't ask it in the negative, it needs to be restated?
Well, yes, it could have been after that motion, since that motion did not pass, a new motion could have been put on then, a second motion.
Okay.
To not recommend.
But I think to not recommend.
Okay.
Or, you know, whatever the motion would be that the board would want. But again, I think it just was sort of something that everybody sort of stepping back took a look at and said.
Took pause and we need to do, we need to make a correction in that. Okay, alright. So, given that, is everybody clear on why we're here tonight then? Okay. To move things along then, I'd like to call for a motion to either, recommend to the trustees to adopt the current land use plan or vote to reject the land use plan, is that correct?
Are we done with the discussions?
Well.
I know we had the.
We called motion and then we have discussion.
You can call a motion and then can have discussion. Motion, second, and then discussion. So it could be adopt, it could be to not adopt, however you, whoever makes the motion chooses.
I'll make a motion in case number eight thirty-four that the Township zoning board recommend the rejection to the township trustees.
Of?
Of.
Of what?
Of the community land plan that was submitted by staff.
For that to move forward, I would need a second.
I'll second.
Lori, for the record, could you repeat that, just so we're clear on what we're voting on?
I just said there was a motion to recommend rejection of the community plan as presented by staff. Does that, does that cover it for you all?
That's fine with me.
Everybody good with that?
I think that's sufficient.
It's a motion.
Yeah, it's sufficient of a motion.
Okay, alright. So now, we can open this for discussion before we take a vote.
I don't have anything else to discuss.
Anything to say?
I think there were some questions on our, during our workshop, right? Around the multifamily stuff. Is everybody, did everybody get their questions answered there? Do we need to have more discussions around that? There was a lot of confusion on what this was going to change and what it's not going to change.
I think I'm pretty clear on what the intent of the land use plan is regarding multiple, multiple family housing. And so I have no further questions on it, as far as I'm concerned, whether other board members do.
I've taken a look at the maps, I feel comfortable on what I'm making a decision about.
Okay.
Are we still voting on the same plan?
Yes.
Or has it changed?
You're voting on the same thing that you're, that was presented to you on case eight thirty-four.
Okay, I thought there was going to be changes made to it.
We can't, because this is the same case, we cannot present to you new information or we can't change.
You'd have to withdraw this application, submit a new one.
It was going to be changed.
The case itself wasn't continued or it wasn't.
Tell you what I'm looking for.
Tabled. Tabled. And so, the information that is before the board is what's before the board because of the, it was, because of that.
So is the only way then we can get changes to deny it and then will we be able to have another case? And then make some changes if necessary?
If you make a recommendation of denial, that's what we take to the trustees. So no, it will not mean that it will come back here with changes. It means that it will go forward to the trustees with your recommendation for denial.
So can we make a recommendation to do that with changes?
That can, as far as I'm aware, Don, tell me if I'm wrong, but you can, when you make the motion, include conditions or say, we, you know, it would be hard to recommend rejection with conditions or with changes. You, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
So, you're right, a point of order is that we have a motion on the table that's been seconded right now. And so we wouldn't be able to.
To do that at the time?
Do that at this time.
So we just have to vote?
Correct.
Okay.
So to be clear, if we're voting yes, we're voting that we agree with rejecting. If we vote no, we're voting that we don't agree, is that correct?
Correct.
You're not rejecting, if you're voting to recommend, whether to reject or approve it.
The motion is to reject it.
Yes, so a yes is a yes.
The motion is to recommend.
The motion is to recommend to the trustees that they either reject it or approve it.
But what he's asking is if I, if he votes yes, he is voting yes to recommend to reject it.
Right, yes.
If you vote no, then you are voting no to such a recommendation.
That is correct.
Okay, so which would leave this still hanging.
So.
So, to be clear then, the motion is to.
To recommend to the trustees that they reject the land use plan.
Okay.
Affirmative, would you agree that we should ask the trustees to reject the plan?
Correct.
As submitted.
Okay.
We'll do that first. I mean, if that's, I mean, that's what the motion is on the table. We've already got that, so we've got to vote in one way or another and then.
Right.
Move to something else. So the question that I've asked, is there any more discussion? Jeff, is there anything on your mind?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. You don't.
I'm good.
You don't, I don't, you, okay.
Okay.
Are we ready for that?
I'd like to.
Oh.
Am I allowed?
Voice, not vote.
I know.
Okay.
I wish I'd been here day one, honestly. And I feel like a bad guy, but I'm going to just tell you my honest to God opinion of this is I'm appalled by the whole process. I find it intellectually dishonest. I find the document intellectually dishonest. I find what's happening today dishonest. I went through the physical data that I could go through on the surveys. And as I understand it, surveys were the primary source of information for this plan. This group, sorry, this group are people, now you've got to remember, there was only two questions asked. One is, what do you like most about Beaver Creek Township? Second is Beaver Creek Township has changed significantly in the last 10 years. What kind of change would you like to see or not like to see in the future? So you didn't say you want steak or chicken. What you said is what do you want for lunch? I mean, you asked extremely open-ended question, yet still, this number of people spoke up and said they didn't want any further development or growth, or limited development and growth. This number of surveys didn't address it, they said they liked SOIN and KFC. And these are the two that represent surveys that showed that somebody wanted more development. Okay? I doubt that the steering committee ever saw any of this data. I know that there was some electronic data as well, but I can almost assure you that it probably conforms to this. If you had asked questions like, how do you feel about growth and development? How do you feel about commercial growth? Instead of having this many responses, it would have been 90% of the responses and everybody in this group knows that. So, even though you didn't ask them whether they wanted steak or chicken, they told you they wanted steak and yet you still gave them chicken. This plan is, is, is a pro-growth plan. And, you know, the provisions here, provisions in here for multi-family dwelling that nobody said they wanted. There are representations in here. Looking at objective D11, evaluate the zoning resolution to support more varied housing options. An update to the township's zoning resolution would include definitions, include definitions for a wide range of housing, including mid-scale housing, small lot housing, townhouses, and duplexes. There's nothing in here, nobody said that's what they want. Nobody said that's what they want. Encourage more entry-level housing. Nobody in here said that. We want neighborhood commercial development. Nobody in here said that. So was this decided primarily by the steering committee? As I understand it, the steering committee was 17 people, only two of which lived in the township.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect.
Okay, how many?
I will be glad to get you that number, but it is definitely more than two. There's been a number of just plain incorrect statements so far. Speculative statements about how the data was collected and what it would show if it was done a different way. That's incredibly speculative, so.
Yeah, but it's really good speculation. I mean.
Just like you would extrapolate from data? Is that, like, you would extrapolate from a small subset of data into a larger idea about, is that what you're saying?
I didn't, I didn't set up the survey, you did.
Okay.
Or your planner did, or did.
I have a question, because you did make a statement that the steering committee didn't see it. Since you have a member of the steering committee, did you see the data?
You were given a pretty detailed.
I'm asking you, Anne, did you see the data?
I have seen two subsets of data, one of which was the nursing student data, which is primarily on my mind because I have dual roles in that situation. The other dataset was not presented as an Excel spreadsheet to me. However, there was.
During the time of the.
During the time of the steering committee, it would have been done as a presentation by Planning Next. And so I would not have been able to delve into that data as an Excel spreadsheet. That's what I'm going to say to you about that.
Probably what troubles me the most about this is, at the last meeting, I brought this up. This is the themes that were supposedly derived from the system, the data, and the steering committee, et cetera, et cetera. And those themes were sustainability, health and wellness, and coordination. I suggested that the theme should probably be growth and development, infrastructure, and fiscal responsibility for the above. So this is what's in the plan, the actual in the plan, and it hasn't changed, is sustainability, wellness, health, and coordination. So now we get the executive summary, which I assume is going to the trustees. Fundamentally, this is the community's plan. Through the process, community members were asked for their ideas to shape the plan's content. That didn't happen. A thorough analysis of survey responses from the township residents identified key themes present throughout. Key themes. Themes. When asked what kind of changes in Beaver Creek Township would you like to see, residents responded with a diverse range of desires. The four most common responses, themes, fell within four categories. Limiting development, maintaining green open space, transportation, and amenities. Now, that's what you're going to tell the trustees, that's not what this document says. Let's just play it straight. This document needs work again. It's convoluted, it's loaded, there's a lot of stuff in here that doesn't match realities of what this community wants. It's a bad plan. That's enough.
So, what's the alternative?
I'm sorry?
What's the alternative? You're not going to stop growth in the township, I'm just curious, what's the alternative?
I don't think, we should, we cannot stop growth.
You can't.
But we don't need to encourage it when everybody tells us they don't want it encouraged. And this is, this is a plan that encourages it. It talks about entry-level housing, it talks about multi-family housing. It talks about, this is a plan about accessibility to this township. Let's cut to the chase. That's what this is about.
It's going to be an explosion.
The alternative is a straightforward plan that truly reflects some objective and subjective criteria as to what the vision, I mean, this says that this is the vision, I'm sorry, this says this is the vision of the community. That's not what anything I've read says. When I read the statistical data as a whole, I mean, this is just the physical data, I'm not seeing anything in there that would reflect that this is what this community wants. So I think the alternative is you go back to the drawing board and you, and you do a survey. You know, I have some, I kind of get the character-based plan. I kind of, I understand it. But if you just ask people what do you like about the community, that gives you the opportunity to back end whatever you want to put in that plan. Because you're going to get such a variety of responses about things that have nothing to do with a comprehensive use plan. And that's what you got. Yet still, this number of people thought fit to say, we don't want further growth and development. You can't stop it, I understand that. But you can treat it conservatively, you can manage it. This has more opportunities for things that this community doesn't really want. And it needs to reflect what the community wants.
More opportunities than what?
I don't agree with that, Max. I.
I mean, you're saying it has more than.
Well, changing the zoning to suburban living medium density, and you, when we had our meeting, you said the only portion that doesn't already have a PUD on it is that little portion on Valley Road. All the rest of the areas that we're going to be changing into this medium density, which allows for multi-housing development. What's, what I fear is these PUD holders are going to come in here as soon as we change us, we want to modify our plans. We don't have anything to stand on. Now, you have multi-housing in all these areas. It doesn't give you more control, it lends for an explosion of housing.
Well, I think it goes back to Rick's original question, which was what's the alternative? And the answer is what we have in place now.
And that's.
And as we discussed, what we have in place now allows for a much wider range of development.
But you, but you say that they're already under PUDs, so they would have to come in. But changing the zoning to allow the PUDs to come in and ask for, I want 40 triplexes in here now, what can we do then? Well, our hands are tied.
And the alternative, the only alternative is not to just go back to what we've got. The alternative is to do a better process and a better plan.
I agree.
But right now, the way these things are set up, the way the zoning is, even these PUDs that are already done, according to the zoning laws, unless I misunderstand, so please correct me, is that they can put eight units per acre on there. That's multifamily housing.
According to the plan.
Correct.
Well, it depends on the PUD.
No.
The zoning says you can put eight units per acre on there.
According to the Stonehill Village PUD, the resolution which created it and which most recently amended it, which was done in 2016, it is divided into several zones, four different zones. And each of those zones has a maximum allowable dwelling unit per acre density. And they also allow either single or multi-family homes, depending on the zone. Those densities range from low, like two dwelling units an acre, all the way up to eight, depending on the zone, and each zone is explained in detail.
And what's the suburban medium density going to be?
The areas that would currently fall under suburban medium density right now, the highest density.
Now under the new plan, these plan.
That plan does not say this means X dwelling units an acre. It's done, it's done on purpose. It doesn't say that it's limited to four or whatever it might be. It says that it would be in harmony with its surrounding.
I just think putting a zoning in there for allowing that, a whole classification is a mistake.
But it does, that doesn't, the, the future land use plan, the community plan, if adopted, would not suddenly replace the zoning districts that already exist.
Well, you know what, good and well, that is coming down the pike then. I mean, it's going to come before us to change the zoning on these parcels or, how did you highlight them?
It is possible, but again, if you look at that map, if what the concern is multifamily, that's what I'm hearing, that's what I've heard.
I'm just density, I don't care if it's multifamily. Let me get my word correct, entry level.
The highest density housing in the plan is listed as suburban, suburban living medium intensity. And it's in those orange areas on the plan.
And that's when Brandy about had her heart attack, when I said that it went from the current land use plan of 63 acres to over 500 acres.
Well, and that's, I'm still, if you compare the existing future land use map like we talked about, all those areas in yellow allow for all the way up to apartments.
But you said that 90% of them already have a PUD in them, so, you know, we can't change that anyway.
90% of the, of the new map. The new future land use plan that is listed as the highest density, not only already has a plan in place, but is already fully built out for the most part. Right? Stonehill Village, most of those developments.
Well, there's a lot of Stonehill Village, that whole dark orange, the backside of it's not built out. And what's to prevent, we change that, the nutters coming in and wanting to change their PUD? Modify it, is that a major modification or is it minor?
It would be absolutely a major modification. To up the density is definitely a major modification.
And what do we have to stand on?
The comprehensive land use plan is not the only pillar of your zoning decisions. It is one, it's a major one. But all the other criteria that we list in our zoning resolution for approving specific site plans and for approving PUDs would still be what you would use to determine whether or not a modification could take place.
So if somebody was to change their mind in the middle of a PUD, which would be, it's likely, but it's not, I should say, it can happen, but it's very unlikely that somebody's going to have. Because by the time they've got the PUDs on there, they're, they can, they've got their developments already going, right?
Well.
The tenants have got a lot of money, so even if they come out and change it though, we still have to approve it.
Yeah, but I'm saying if we have this new adoption of this suburban living, we don't have a leg to stand on if they want to change it. Now, they come in and they want to change it.
We can allow them up to eight units an acre.
Right. But this medium density, we don't know what that's going to be, this suburban medium density. It could be 18, 20.
We don't have a cap on it.
But that's built into the zoning law, not the.
Correct.
Am I correct, that's going to be built into the zoning regulation?
Right, and then. It's got to be something different or more if we're changing the zoning. I mean, I'm just concerned.
No, I understand your concern, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to understand where you, you know.
That's where I'm coming from, I'm just thinking it's going to be an explosion of growth and.
Let me, let me ask you one other question. Action D14 says the majority of housing in township is and is expected to remain single-family homes. However, single-family homes may not be attainable for younger adults. A wider variety encouraged, a wider variety of housing, some at lower price points should be encouraged in the township to provide more housing opportunity. Smaller scale, single homes, duplexes, quads, and townhouses offer lower-priced housing that can be built at different scales and integrated into the community, communities' existing character. What data supported that as a goal?
Economic development data from Green County Department of Development. Because as I've stated multiple times through this process, while the responses from our residents informed the plan to a great deal, they are not the only things that we considered when determining everything that went in this plan document.
Obviously.
And that is a reasonable and very common practice to include not just residents' opinions about what should happen, but also regulatory agencies, regional agencies, staff, trustee, other stakeholder opinions, it all goes into what was created. So, there are things in the plan that are going to conflict with the data that we got from our residents. I'm not trying to say that that's not the case.
We're representing the residents, this board represents residents.
And your residents are also the Phillips Commercial, it's also the GM plants that operate here. Those are your residents too. And that's something that I think it's really important to remember. The, the people that live in houses in Beaver Creek Township are your residents. But so is everybody else that operates here, and that's really important to remember.
Can I say that again?
The, the people that live in houses in Beaver Creek Township are your residents.
Yeah.
But so are the employers. So are the people that.
I don't, I don't agree with that, but they're not residents.
That's an interesting take. That's an interesting take.
There's a difference between where you live and where you work.
Employers, not employees. The employers, the people that create jobs here, that have businesses here, they are also your residents.
They own property here.
That's correct. They are property owners here.
Correct.
They are taxpayers here, they are voters here. And I think, while I definitely respect and appreciate your fervor for protecting the residents of Beaver Creek Township, I feel like you are missing some of the residents of Beaver Creek Township.
Well, I think you're missing the majority of them that don't want growth. That's the number one thing of the whole survey.
Again, if you, if you compare the previous plan to this plan, it is clear that it is a restriction.
I can't, I didn't get to where you are.
A restriction of growth. And I don't, I frankly, I've run out of ways to try to explain that.
I agree with it at this point, I mean, I just think we're going around circles. There's no, I mean.
Right, I mean.
At this point, it's, I think everybody, we, we are where we are. I don't think there's going to be a, a change.
You know, in summary, for me, this is a plan of who other people think we should be. It's not a plan that was developed based on what we think we should be. And I promise I'll be done.
Okay. We hearing that our discussion is exhausted?
I have no questions.
Is there anything else? Lori, could you please repeat the motion?
I've got a motion to recommend rejection of the community plan as submitted by staff.
An affirmative means that we will reject?
You will recommend to reject.
Recommend to reject. Anything else? Let's call.
Ready. Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No. Mr., Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. We have our motion. We'll transmit it to the trustees.
Are we done?
You do have minutes left.
Did you, and my apologies to you on the minutes, Jim?
I'm sorry?
I missed you on my list to send out minutes on Friday.
You sent them this morning?
No, I sent them this afternoon.
Okay.
It was a little later. So my apologies, I missed you.
That's what I called morning.
I missed you on the list when I went down through this little one here. So that was my bad.
Okay.
Minutes, there were several. Could you tell us which ones we're going to look at first on the list here?
You have three sets of minutes before you. The first one, excuse me, the first one was from your previous meeting on June first of twenty-three.
Yes.
And then you have two sets of older minutes from twenty-twenty-two that were in the process of being developed by Carolyn, our previous admin assistant, when she left. And so we are trying to bring those to you as well to close up twenty-twenty-two's minutes.
Let's open the ones that were from the previous meeting, please.
So we'll start with February, oh, from the previous meeting, you said?
Yeah, June first.
Yes, hold on. Okay.
Could you scroll through? When we discussed major and minor modifications?
Do you have a page by any chance?
No, I didn't, I didn't bring the right notes.
Just do a find, you can do a find.
Page fourteen.
It should be second paragraph on the second page there, I think.
Right here?
Oh, third paragraph, I'm so sorry, third paragraph.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Dalton represents, referenced the second proposed condition, noted it talks about incidental modifications, is that what you're? It goes on to say typically a minor or major modification would have come back to the zoning commission and would also go before the trustees, is that?
Yeah, the last sentence there that says she did not realize these changes, such as relocating a road, would come back before the commission. Can you put in parentheses, context satire? Please?
Sure.
Or strike the comment.
What page is that again, is that four?
That is, yes, page four.
I can strike that if you'd like.
Okay. Also, there was a section there that the students had come and talked.
Probably.
As my understanding, when they spoke, was that they wanted to make certain that the documents were a part of the record. And I didn't, I think it should be a part of the minutes if we, whatever happens in the next meetings. Whether or not that would become part of the community plan is something totally different. But I think it was important that they wanted to make certain that there was, that those documents that they handed off to you were part of the, the record.
The record.
They just wanted to be heard.
Yeah, okay. You, you scroll back down now, okay, last paragraph on that, on page thirteen.
Correct.
Uh, they performed seventy-seven door-to-door surveys and would like to see that included in the document?
When.
They would like to see included that Wright State Public Health students completed the door-to-door surveys.
They did ask for that, but in clarification, when they came, I asked them what the point was, and they said to make certain that there was a record of this. And that was what they wanted, was a record of their letter and their comments to be reflected in the minutes. That's what I heard them saying to me.
To like, like an appendix or something to it?
You know, when we've had presentations before, for example, those become an addendum to the minutes.
Did they present anything to you at the meeting?
They presented it to Lori, they handed off their documents to Lori.
I, I didn't realize that they wanted it as.
With a letter and a slide of some sort that they had.
There were two, I think, two slides, there was a letter, there were two.
They did.
Yeah.
I, then if we have those documents, it's no problem for us to amend the minutes to include that.
Okay.
Sure.
That's all I have on these. Anybody else have anything on these? Okay, with those amendments, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With the amendments?
Oh, with the amendments added, please.
Second.
Is that you, Rick?
Yes.
So, a motion to approve the June first, twenty-twenty-three minutes as amended? Is that what we've done?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Board. Two more sets of minutes. The ones I have up right now are from February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, which was actually a makeup. February third was the original hearing date, there were not a quorum in attendance, and so we moved it to two weeks from that date.
General reminder that when we're approving these minutes, that they are a reflection that we are seeing these minutes, not the content therein, correct?
Yeah, essentially, you do not have to have attended the meeting to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay. I have nothing, anybody have anything on this minutes? We're doing them one at a time. This one is February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Correct.
I will make an emotion to approve the minutes from February seventeenth of twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Give a word? The last that I have is from November third, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion?
No, that one has my name spelled wrong. Just in the zoning commission members, my name's spelled wrong.
I will correct that. Oh. Christine.
Christine. I get that a lot. Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, not even close.
All right, well, I'm going to make an emotion to approve the minutes from November third, two thousand twenty-two with my name change, thank you.
I'll second that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. No other business before you today?
Clarify when our next meeting is?
Your next regularly scheduled meeting will be August third. However, this is an excellent opportunity to note that I will actually be in Maine for my father's memorial service that week. So I was going to request to you that if we have business before us at that time, which I currently do not have any cases, I don't, I believe the applicant for eight thirty-six is going to wait a couple of months. I told him, essentially, you need to get your, your information together. I think he was asking for too much, and he agrees. So he'll probably not see you until September. That being said, in case something were to come before us in the meantime, may I ask that we schedule the August meeting for the following week?
August tenth?
As a placeholder?
Yeah, that would be, if we, if we get business, that's when I would schedule the meeting, because I will not be here on the third.
I'm fine with that.
Depending what it is, I will come that day that I'm.
Yeah, I'll be back.
Yeah. So am I hearing that overall, that seems to be agreeable?
I will be here the first week of August anyways.
Great. Excellent.
Tenth?
The tenth. I will, of course, keep you informed if we do have any business, you'll know well before the end of this month. So thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, other than that, I have no more business for you.
I'm not sure about August tenth, but that'll be okay. We'll be able to figure that out. Okay. Nothing else, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
Well, I make a motion to adjourn, I've been motioning all night.
I'll second it again.
Thank you.
All right.
Wait. You have to vote, Anne, you don't just get all crazy with the gavel.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you, Board.